Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Select Board was called to order at 5:30. We went into executive session and we might have executive session about two minutes ago. Yeah, with no action taken. Approve the November 21st, 2019 Selectman's Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Public forum, this is an opportunity for anyone who wants to address the Board of Selectmen with any issue that is not on the agenda.
Hi, I'm Nina Pearl Mutter from 13 Locke Street. I'm gonna go first because I don't think I'm gonna take as long as John. But I have a very serious issue to bring up. And I really don't know what the answer to this issue is because it involves a rundle too and it's been ongoing. And I can describe several incidents. They all come down to one word, which is scoff law. And I looked it up in the dictionary, you know, online dictionary, of course. And it says, "Person who flouts the law, especially by failing to comply with the law, that's difficult to enforce effectively." That was the best definition I found. I also noticed that the word is being used more and more and the graph of the use of the word just seems to be going up and up. And I think probably my concerns are the concerns of a lot of other people. As many of you know, I'm a member of the Planning Board and I get a lot of concern citizens coming in over certain projects. More recently, it's been projects on North Street. People are very, very concerned about the traffic and the potential for accidents there. And I'm gonna give you a couple of examples, personal examples. We have a lot of cyclists on North Street. There isn't much shoulder area. And it would be difficult to make shoulder area there because of all the trees and of course a rundle would have to be involved. My husband was coming down North Street toward Dock Square this year. And a cyclist was coming along in the other direction and the motorist decided to pass the cyclist and moved right out into the middle of his lane. And to avoid a head-on collision, he swerved out to the right. Unfortunately, there was a telephone pole there which he just grazed. It cost us a new mirror on the car. I was coming along about two weeks after that, again, going south on North Street toward Dock Square, and the same exact thing happened to me, but luckily a telephone pole wasn't there. I could have stayed in my lane and just had a nice little head-on collision, probably collected a lot of insurance. But my feeling was that the person would veer back into the lane and probably hit the unprotected cyclist, so I didn't. I was lucky. This is going on a lot. This is what you call scoff law. You're not supposed to veer out into some of the opposite lane, basically, when there's oncoming traffic, just to get around a cyclist. You're supposed to wait. Okay, here are the next examples. I'm coming along River Road and somebody's decided, these guys have decided to fix a stone wall there. And the next thing I know, I'm seeing, the only thing warning I'm getting is they put out orange cones in the road and there's a guy standing in the middle of my lane as I'm moving along toward, you know, toward a rundle. And, you know, I could swerve, there was no warning, no warning put out there saying, you know, that construction ahead or anything like that. But the most egregious examples I see, and it's becoming more and more common, are the landscaping trucks with the trailers, and I'm sure you've all encountered it. They block the roads. I've had to tell them to stop blocking my mailbox on Locke Street. I've had to tell them to stop blocking my driveway. You know, Locke Street, as you know, is a very narrow road and there's no parking on it. And it's there for a reason. Oak Street, the same thing, West Street parking only on one side. This past winter, this past winter, summer, I don't remember. I have a husband who's pretty old and we had to call an ambulance to take him into the hospital one night because he has COPD very badly and he couldn't breathe. If a landscaping truck were parked there, the way they park on Locke Street, and during the day, that ambulance wouldn't have been able to get into my house. There's not enough room for them to pass. This summer, we had a fire on Oak Street and the fire engines had to come down. And if there are landscaping trucks parked there with trailers, those fire engines would have a difficult time getting past. There's a reason we have no parking signs on some of our streets. But what really got me was, you know, a couple of weeks ago, I was coming up North Street from the post office and a landscaping truck was parked on North Street, impeding the traffic that was coming in for prelude. There was a police officer further up at the fire station and I stopped and chatted with him and said, "You know, I don't think that he should be able to impede North Street, especially since when the person who hired him has a driveway that they could pull that trailer into." Sooner or later, you're going to have a real problem. The landscaping trucks are getting bolder and bolder. They're driven by kids who are not supervised. You saw, seen it, these are teenagers who are, you know, hired for the summer, they go out and they do their work, but they don't understand the laws. They don't understand, they can't go down a street that says no parking and just park there because they're a landscaping truck. I've had them pull out of stop signs, you know, right in front of me as oncoming traffic because they felt that they had a trailer and they could just bully their way, which they can. I'm not gonna try to, you know, hit them or anything like that. We need solutions to these problems as population grows, as tourists come in, because sooner or later, you're gonna have a fatal accident if you haven't had one already. My biggest problem is the landscaping trucks. I can continue to call the police on them. I've already got a reputation among them, I don't care. But, you know, the police don't want to have to keep come down and keep telling them to move or put, you know, put themselves in the driveway of the person who hired them. You know, that's where they should be, just like any plumber, just like any contractor who comes in. And I don't know quite what to do about this. About the cyclist problem, I think you could put up signs that say, "Do not pass," you know, "do not swerve out of your lane," or just a picture that shows someone trying to pass a cyclist in a big X as they go into the other lane. You can put up signs there that may help. But, you know, the landscaping trucks, I think, are something where you have to get to the landscapers and you have to say you cannot park where there are no parking signs, where nobody else can park. And that's my pet peeve right now, but I think it's much more serious than, even the police are taking it. If they had to go around and they had to tell the landscapers to move, they'd be, that'll be half their day, running around town, telling them you cannot block the streets.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah. Yeah, I think maybe...
I almost hit one the other night in the dark, right in the middle of Pier Road. I know what you're saying, Nina, and I hear you, and if you don't get satisfaction, come see me.
Well, you know...
Because I...
It's not that I don't get satisfaction.
No, I understand, but you are absolutely correct because they do it all over Cape Orpus, where I live, all over the roads. And the roads are narrow enough as this. And the town needs to enforce its own ordinances, and I agree with you completely. As far as cyclists go, you can put up all the signs you want, but that won't stop the problem. You can't fix stupid. I mean, it's just, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, I mean, you just, that's a whole, that's a whole other ballgame right there and...
But we could send, we could send letters to the local establishments.
That's one of the things I thought of, is to send letters to landscapers that, you know, and enforce it. I mean, ticket them. Because, you know, ambulances have to get through. Fire engines have to get through.
Well, two-lane roads need to go in two lanes, not into the other oncoming traffic lane because there's a, you know, an eight-by-twelve or fourteen landscaping trailer in the middle of it.
That's right.
I completely agree with you. And I appreciate the fact that you've come tonight to bring this up and bring this to public attention.
Well, I already have my reputation among them, so...
Well, I do too, so...
Thank you very much.
All right, that's all I want.
Thank you, Nina.
Anybody else? Come right up.
John Richton, I live on Capestone Drive. And I am the Town Tree Warden and Chair of the Shade Tree Committee. And first, I want to say that we really appreciate the commitment of the money that you provide for the maintenance and planting of trees around town. So what I have to say is in no way meant to in any way put that out of question, plus, you know, the emailing that you've sent out or the messages that you've posted show a good concern about the recycling, so that's not the point. I wanted to bring some things to your attention and then I'll send an email, maybe to Laurie, with this letter I've written. I'll just try to go through it without reading it, but go through the points if I can because I think they're important when we're thinking about recycling and what we're gonna do with it in the future. Okay, so first, as you know, the world's oceans are polluted with plastics. So anything that we can do to recycle and to promote the recycling of plastics at a town level is extremely important in Kennebunkport because this is an ocean-side resort community. In the long run, that makes sense. The second item is, the second item I want to bring up is discontinuing curbside recyclable paper has a direct impact on harvesting trees for pulp throughout the world. And I think it's remarkably short-sighted for any town, especially this one with its great tree heritage and its important history of arboreal preservation and conservation, not to recycle, not to recycle paper. I mean, even in terms of, it's not so much just the budget, it's also, you know, what the future is that we need to envision and plan for. So it has a certain spiritual side, if you will, as well, a moral side and morale. So it actually, when we don't recycle paper, it kind of degrades the significance of the town's efforts to manage and retain trees lining and shading our streets. You know, that's important to consider. Third, is to consider the inestimable value, the value of trees as a carbon sink. I know that you all know this, it's been scientifically well-established and conservation's a very important part of the effort to regain enough atmospheric quality and ecological stability to mitigate the consequences of global warming and climate change. Four, households, and this is where it gets into specific dollars and cents, households transporting unsorted recyclables to the Seerode Transfer Station is shifting, in my opinion, is shifting the cost of recycling onto the resident, onto Kennebunk residents who are dedicated to household recycling. I'll put some numbers to this. Imagine that 500 Kennebunkport households continue to recycle by taking two regular-sized containers to Seerode. Assuming each household did this 24 times a year, as we did during the curbside recycling, two containers 24 times a year, that would come out to $20 a month and taken over 500 households, that amounts to $120,000 a year. That's what it amounts to. Another terribly significant unintended consequence of this decision is to discourage recycling in Kennebunkport in general. Yes, I know that you've, you know, you've tried to come up with alternatives and I appreciate that, and I've shown the residents do as well. But we have to think in terms of what it means next year and the year after. How do we restart a program? It's gonna cost time and money and hours and effort.
Well, we are working on that. I don't mean to interrupt you, but part of the problem too, it's bigger than this, and the things that you say are correct. You know, I'm a commercial fisherman, I know what you're saying about the ocean full of garbage. If we drained it out, people would be horrified. But, you know, some of these things aren't being recycled anyways. All we were doing was making ourselves feel good by putting things in that blue box. And when I say that, what happened was... And when I say that, what happened was we were not properly educated as to what goes in the box.
Or the change.
And the change and the fact that paper isn't even recyclable, isn't even recycled anymore. I mean, this isn't dead. And I, and I appreciate the fact that you come and you bring this to us. And hopefully, you know, we'll all be part of the solution and not part of the problem. But we, this isn't dead. And when recycling comes back to Kennebunkport in whatever fashion that it comes into, hopefully, it'll be a much better and, and more productive process than what it was before. Because I'm going to tell you, all you were doing was making everybody feel good and patting myself on the back and saying, I put my stuff in my blue container and put it out. Because the things I threw in there and I thought I was doing the right thing, I wasn't. Most of the stuff I threw in was contaminants.
Well, we are definitely working on it.
Yes, I mean, I don't want to argue with you, but I want people to know that we are serious about this.
Oh, I know, I know that. And there's a committee that looks into it. And I mean, I know that you're considering it. And I know that.
And we're getting ready for another budget cycle, and we're going to have to talk about it again.
But Eagle Main does recycle.
Some of the stuff.
But it doesn't recycle a lot.
They, they, I have a friend who.
If you go on their website, and I, I know that residents have gone up there too, to, to look at it. And they do what they say on the website.
But it doesn't all get recycled. I have a friend who, I won't mention his name or whatever, but who has a friend who works there. And he says that a lot of that stuff goes in the landfill.
All right, well.
So if we're going to do it, we need to do it right.
Do you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, there are a couple of other things.
Well, go right ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I, I already did that. The way I've written it here anyway, please accept it. Don't get concerned. The falling, the folly of ending curbside pickup of recyclables is further punctuated by its impact on sound use of resources. For example, if you factor in 3.5 miles from Dock Square to the Seerode facility, those same 500 households would collectively travel 3,500 miles on the roads each year importing recyclables. A portion of those miles would be on roads in Kennebunkport. I know that that seems like a miniscule thing, but it does add up. Assuming 20 miles per gallon each for a vehicle at the current price of $2.65 per gallon at Guays Sanoco, fuel alone would cost these residents about $463.75. This is primarily the reason I brought this here because I wanted to give you what I've learned by, by researching it. In addition, these 500 vehicles would put approximately two tons of CO2 annually into the atmosphere, taking these recyclables to Seerode. It is difficult to calculate the cost impact of these, of these two tons of atmospheric CO2 because of the ni, because of the dynamic quality of the atmosphere and, and the ecosystem, especially as we're approaching a tipping point. So again, it's, you know, I'm concerned about that personally. I think that you are too. And, but I just, I want to get these into the, into the record as the town tree warden. That's what I'm, I'm doing in that capacity and as a resident. So I agree with, with, I think, the comments that were made in August by John Dugger and some other person that, that it, it is, it is, and I'm sure you agree too, that it is short-sighted not to recycle.
But we're, it's not that we don't want to recycle. They told us that most of the recycle, much of the recycle, goes into the trash anyway. So what we were doing was.
So what are they doing at the transfer station?
They're taking cardboard.
They're, they're removing the contaminants is what they're doing. At the transfer station.
And if it's contaminated, it goes into the trash. So it's not that we don't want to recycle. It's just that to spend $200,000 to recycle to find out that it's going in the trash anyway, to me, is ridiculous.
Well, we're still spending close to that or a good part of that. Just, just as individual residents. So I think it's, you know, and if 500 households is the number, I don't know what number was recycling.
When you go, when you go take your recyclables, you're probably on your way to Hannaford anyway.
I know.
So, you know.
So we're looking at two different things. We're looking at drop-off and pickup, one of the two. We have even, we've begun to look into all these questions because all these questions, they keep cropping up, different questions, well, what's the benefits of pickup? What's the benefit of drop-off? What's the problems of both of those? So we're looking into that, and we're going to do something about it. But we haven't got there yet. But we're going to have something, I'm quite sure, for this year's budget coming up.
Yeah, I'm not coming here to contend with you on the issue. I came here.
We are going to do something. And we do really appreciate what you had to say tonight. And we're very well aware of it. And we're very well aware that the town does want to recycle. We want to recycle, but we want to do the right thing.
Yeah.
And we all need to realize too, we talk about recycling. And I think we can all agree on this point. As consumers, we need to do a better job at what we purchase.
Oh, absolutely.
That, that's really where the problem will be solved. It isn't going to be solved by throwing, recycling into a bucket. It's going to be solved by us as consumers demanding that the, that the manufacturers put things in recyclable products as opposed to, you know, a lot of, a lot of products that, as I said, when I was recycle, when I was quote-unquote recycling myself at home, most of this stuff wasn't even recyclable. But I didn't know that.
Yeah, you have to look at the numbers.
Education is a big factor.
Yes, so, yeah, it's going to take all of us. But, you know, we do appreciate.
I do appreciate your point about the consumer society we live in.
Yes, absolutely.
Christmas gifts without it. But the reality is, the recycling program too has a, has tangible and intangible impacts on the younger people as well. And if we show our efforts, and again, I know you are, but if we show, I want to just get this in, tree warden, we show our efforts, it does, it does mean a lot.
Well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward? All set? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, five, review of Ocean Avenue Seawall project.
Mike Claus and Megan McDevitt are here.
Yes, Mike, I was wondering where you were.
He's hiding behind the podium.
People can hide well. Mike Claus, Public Works. I will try to be quick. We've been working diligently away on getting the Ocean Avenue Seawall project going. We're looking to do it in the spring. And Megan has some, an update for you. So I'll just turn it over to Megan McDevitt, our engineer on the project.
Great.
Hi, Megan. Nice to see you again. I just want to be upfront, I'm getting over a cold a little bit. So if I got a lingering cough, I apologize. I'll try to step away from the mic.
Everybody has the same thing.
So what I want to do today is just kind of give you guys a little timeline, a little update on the Ocean Ave Seawall project. And to kind of just, you know, for everyone here, if anyone hasn't been involved in the meetings we've had in the past, I'm going to start from the beginning and then just briefly go through and let you know where we're at to date. So for those who don't know, the project is about 660 to 670 feet of seawall replacement between the Nonantum Resort and the Fairfield Creek Bridge. I think I got that right. This wall is in pretty bad shape. And I actually went down there on Friday and took some of these pictures from the riverside of the wall, so not from the Ocean Ave side. This is a culvert that sits between Nonantum and Mr. Rinaldi's property, private residence. That's a pretty, pretty significant deterioration and cracking. You can see there's actually settlement and separation of the culvert from the wall itself. This is Mr. Rinaldi's house where it connects into the wall. You can see some pretty really significant cracking and deterioration and spalling of the concrete there. This is a little further down the wall. Again, more spalling and cracking. And this is right by where we have one of the outlets for the drainage infrastructure from Ocean Ave or outlets to the river. Again, more, more spalling, more cracking, more deterioration. At this point, the wall has fulfilled its full life, and it needs to be replaced. And that's something we've been evaluating for well over 10 years. It's not getting any better, and it's time to, to do something about it. So we had proposed a project last, pretty much this time last year, to demo a small section of the wall in front of Nonantum, about 50 feet, and then to demo and replace the remaining 612 feet of the wall. That was put out to bid in early January. Shaw Brothers was the low bidder in the project, and they were awarded that project in March. But what we were using to replace the wall was a precast segmented block wall because of its cost and efficiency. We were trying to find a product that we could kind of come in. And I think I described it as Legos, where it could be built quickly so they could get in and out of there quickly because we know this is a busy road, and we didn't want to disturb traffic too much for too long. This is just showing kind of the extents of what it looked like. What we were proposing was using the wall and bringing the wall up, I believe, two foot nine inches a minimum above the sidewalk, and then putting a small pedestrian handrail over the top of it so we would have the fall protection for those who were walking on the sidewalk. The reason the wall was extended up because of some critical slopes in the area. We needed that crash rating. We needed the protection for the vehicles. So as I mentioned, this was bid in January of, earlier this year, so 2019, and awarded to Shaw Brothers in March. Based on bond fees, the engineering fees, construction fees, construction engineering fees and construction fees, we were actually under our bond amount by just over $100,000. So we were looking good, getting ready to get started, started doing shop drawings. And then some requests came to make some modifications to the aesthetics of the proposed design in the summer, right before we started construction, which was originally targeted for September, right after Labor Day. The design or the concerns were, as you know, that the, the height of, the increased height of the wall was really going to take away from the view. And the view is very important here in Kennebunkport. You guys, as, as one resident mentioned, you guys are an ocean town, and we want to try to save that. But we also had to make sure we fulfilled our obligations of meeting the crash ratings on some of those critical slopes. So the alternative that was developed was to lower the wall and put a bridge rated or bridge rail across it. It would be a three-rail system, similar to Dock Square, but a little bit different. So we worked with the contractor on that to come up with something that would work. We also looked at removing the wall or lowering the wall and removing the rail in sections that were the non-critical slope sections in front of Mr. Rinaldi's house, in front of the River Club, where we didn't have those critical slopes. So we came up with this revised design, a little lower wall, the steel rail across the top of it, in sections where we were going to figure out something different to separate the road from the private facilities at a later date. Unfortunately, this design costs quite a bit more. And in working with Shaw Brothers, who's the contractor, there was quite a bit of additional cost associated with it, specifically about the steel rail. That crash rate rail is, is much more beefy. It also, the wall had to get a little thicker in order to support the railing. So that new design put us over the bond amount by $84,120. So the next step was to look at the project again and see where we could find some value engineering, is what I typically call it, or, or project reductions. And one thing we looked at is the areas that are, have existing fill. So when this wall was originally constructed, it's well over 100 years old. It was constructed in the 1800s. There was no fill on the riverside of the wall. Since then, with development and things like that, there's been fill placed on the Nonantum property as well as in front of the River Club. And what this fill has done, this picture here is the Nonantum property. And this one here is in front of the River Club. This fill has pretty much taken away the need for that wall to act as a retaining wall. In those section, the wall does not actually protect or hold up Ocean Ave anymore. It's just a physical barrier between, you know, the, the public right of way and the private properties at that point. So what we did is we went to go talk to Shaw Brothers and said, if we don't touch those sections of the wall where we're not needing the wall from a structural capacity, we're not worrying about protecting Ocean Ave in that area. And we reduced the scope a little bit. We reduced about 172 feet of the wall in front of the River Club. And we just don't touch the wall in front of Nonantum. Let's focus on the 440 feet between those two properties that is holding up Ocean Ave. And we just replace that with the wall and the steel rail. What, what do we have for a price? And doing that, this is just a little image of what it would look like. So you can see much shorter. But in doing that, we got a 97, almost a $98,000 credit back from the contractor. That will bring us in just under our construction budget or our bond amount of $1 million. So we have not started construction yet, but we've now found a project, a limited work that fulfills, you know, meets the bond amount and also fulfills the goal of we're really replacing the significantly deteriorated portion of the wall that supports and holds up Ocean Ave. And that's what we've achieved with this revised design. The contractor, to Mike's point, the contractor would like to start it in end of February, early March, with the goal of being done before Memorial Day so that it doesn't impact your summer tourist season. And so that's kind of where we're at right now with that project.
Megan, hypothetically speaking, if we did that, and sometime in the future, you know, in the future, somebody wanted to replace the wall in front of the River Club down to the, the bridge under Chicks Cross, Chicks Creek, could that be done in the future?
Yes.
And would they have to dig down to do it or just dig down enough to make a footing for the wall? Since it doesn't really retain anything.
In those areas, they would just have to dig down enough to make a footing. There is a little section beyond the River Club between the bridge that would have to do a full footing.
No, that answers my question, yeah. I think that's a great idea. Just do what we can afford to do and.
What, what do you think, Sheila?
I agree.
Yeah, I agree also. I agree too. So do we need to vote on this to move this forward?
Because this project has been back and forth, yes. We would like to have some acknowledgement from you that you accept this because we would need to sign the change order so that we can move the project forward.
Do we have a motion?
I moved, we accept the revised, revised plan for Ocean Avenue retaining wall.
You want to put a, a amount in there?
Yeah, for, what was that amount again?
Eight something.
900.
Eight, 986, 293.
Right, 986.
986, 293.
I second that.
Referring to second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that extra work. Mike, did you want to add anything or?
So I did speak with Elliot Siderites with the River Club, and we let John Rinaldi know that this was going on. Elliot is going to probably come back and ask us to look at the wall in front of the River Club just from a, from a standpoint of what are our plans for the future? I told him, you know, that that would have to be considered in future capital budgets. But they're aware of it, but I think they will, they will come back But they're aware of it, but I think they will, they will come back and say we should probably do something, so it's not-
We'll see.
Certainly they're right, and someday we may, or some future board may decide to do something, but for right now, we've, that's the money we've got, and we need to replace that.
And Elliot understood that.
Yeah.
But he said, they will probably be back talking to us in the future.
And I know Elliot also understands that it costs more because we made changes to, you know, to, I won't say accommodate him, but suggestions that were made by the folks that are down there on a regular basis.
We will continue on.
That's right, that's all we can do. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
You could get your paintbrush out.
They'll probably have to, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Number six. No, I just-
I'm sure you knew which one we were on. Appoint code enforcement officer.
Good evening. So, I'd like to introduce to you all, a new hire that we have in the Planning and Development Office, so Andrew Welch is our new hire for the position of Deputy Code Enforcement Officer and Plumbing Inspector.
So is Andrew coming to us, so people at home can see him, and you're going to tell us a little of Andrew's background?
I'm getting there.
Okay.
Yes, so Andrew's a resident here in town, currently a captain with the Fire Department, Village Fire Company here, as well as serving in the U.S. Army Reserves. He has come to us from the Portland Water District, where he worked in facilities management, and previous to that, worked as a site foreman for Valley Builders. So we're excited to have him here with us, and he's started the process of studying for his exams, and we're looking forward to having him here in town.
Great. Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nice to have you.
We have to make a motion to appoint him, and then we can-
Yeah, it's till-
Till 2020, June, and then we'll appoint all the other.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Your motion, second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Very nice.
Congratulations.
I think you'll like working here.
Oh, yeah, so far, so good, yeah.
The commute's good.
Yeah, about 70 miles a day to anywhere between four or five, depending which way I go.
Isn't that great?
Yeah, it's been great.
Well, it's nice to have residents working for us. We really value that.
Thank you.
Very nice, thanks.
Reviews, proposed land use ordinance, revisions regarding public hearing, notice requirements.
Yes, so we've discussed this a little bit before, but when we lost the general tribune that created a bit of a practical difficulty for us for our notice requirements for planning boards, zoning boards, appeals types of hearings, that left us with the press herald, which what we found was sometimes two to three times as much in terms of cost. Also, just recognizing that, you know, most folks nowadays don't necessarily get their information from a, you know, a paper anymore, and we've certainly increased our reliance on the use of the website. So what we have is a proposal for an ordinance amendment, gives us much greater flexibility in terms of our notice requirements. So what we'd like to proceed with, and what we have in the ordinance language, would, it would still have us do a notice in a local paper, but because of how often the deadlines that those papers have, we're requesting that that notice be reduced from 10 days down to three days because of their publication schedule, but that we also still maintain our 10-day prior to hearing, but instead have that be part of the website, our website posting. And that's the general gist of what we're looking to accomplish here.
Just a question, as I was reading through it, you put in the term "or," not "and." So if you're going to do both, or you're just going to do one or the other? You see what I mean?
Correct, yes.
Originally, it was "or," but after the town attorney had reviewed it, their recommendation was "and," and so it should say "and."
Should say "and."
So you do both.
So we will do both. Can you confirm with Tracy that the language will say "and"? And this would be voted on in our March election.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
That works.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll deal with it. Excuse me. Eight, award bid for the purchase of a new Ford Explorer for the police department. Hi, chief.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening, Greg.
So, this year's been quite a dilemma for us, I know you had a long night, but we originally had budgeted for a Dodge Charger replacement this year. Dodge, in its infinite wisdom, has decided to do a remake of the Dodge Charger, so they had a very small window for us to go out to bid for a Dodge Charger, which was about a month. They didn't tell the dealerships about it, so we kept asking, kept asking, kept asking, and finally I got the acknowledgement. We tried to go out to bid and then bring it in front of you folks, and I missed out by a couple of days, so I couldn't order a new Charger. We looked for leftovers, there was nothing, so I had to go to Plan B, and it was scheduled to replace an Explorer, an old one, 2015, but I don't have the money to cover that cost. So we went out to bid just to see what the numbers would be, and it's pretty close. I am recommending that, ask you folks that you accept a bid from Key Ford for $28,525 for a new Explorer. That includes the trade-in of an old Explorer, our first one that we got. And then I'm asking for the ability to use $4,000 from the Pickovit Fund to cover the costs associated with it, because, you know, just because we get a new car, you know, these things are starting to look like jet cockpits, and there's all kinds of electronics and things, and it can cost between $4,000 to $8,000 just to get things swapped over, put decals on it, replace new equipment, and it can go up and up, so it's been tough, but this is my Plan B, so I apologize, but the Dodge Chargers-
Well, that's what the Pickovit Fund is for.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping, so I'm not asking for any more money, just the ability to use some of that to help me.
Well, I make a motion that we authorize the PD to expend $28,525 for a new Ford Explorer, and to be, also to be able to use $4,000 of the Pickovit Fund, also to include authorization of the trade-in of the old Explorer. Get all that, Arlene?
Yes.
I have a first.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, folks.
Thanks, chief. I'm glad that you're getting another all-wheel drive.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, number nine, adopt a resolution to authorize the town of Kettabunkport to amend loan agreements and notes issued for a wastewater treatment plant and pump station upgrade projects. Chris?
Good evening. So as everybody's aware, that loan was due to mature on January 4th of this coming year. We have not been able to complete all the projects. The one outstanding project now is the replacement backup generator at the plant. Right now, the estimated date for the substantial completion of that is June 30th, so based on that, we're looking to extend the maturity date for the loan.
Okay.
All right.
I have a motion here. I move that the resolution, entitled resolution to authorize the town of Kettabunkport to amend loan agreement and notes issued for a wastewater treatment plant and pump station upgrade project adopted in form presented to this meeting, and an attested copy of said resolution be filed within the minutes of this meeting.
I have a first.
Second.
First and second? Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Ten, consider supplemental assessments for two new sewer service connections.
So we just recently received two more applications for sewer service. One was for map block in lot 41-2-8B. The prorated amount for that property for the rest of the year is $60.79. The second wastewater application received is from map block in lot 9-20, and the prorated amount for that lot was $46.76.
I'm going to get ripped on that.
So we're looking for authorization from the board to commit those rates.
A motion?
I move that we authorize assessments for the two new services at set amounts.
Second.
The first and second? All in favor? Okay, eleven, authorize contractor Huber Technology to refurbish both Huber profound screens at wastewater treatment plant. Could you explain to us exactly what these screens do do? I have an idea, but-
Sure. So these are two rotary screens. These screens are responsible for basically screening the initial, all the initial plant influent. They're designed to remove grit, you know, any solid material that comes in that's really not organic. We get everything from face cloths to, you know, towels and-
Rubber duckies.
Yep, rubber duckies and other things. So these have been in service since 2012. However, what we've been experiencing lately is some downtime with them, some certain bearings and bushings that are in these units, without getting into a lot of detail, are starting to wear, puts a load on the gearbox, which ultimately results in a load on the electric motor that drives the gearbox, and then it trips the circuits. So we've been having a hard time keeping those up and running. The replacement of all of those parts, and it's not just bushings and bearings, but there are brushes inside these units that need to be replaced, and the work that's associated with this is really beyond the expertise of our crew to be able to handle. And it's something that Huber can come out and do in a timely fashion. Basically, it's going to take them about a day apiece to do those, with some minor help from our crew.
So you'll be able to operate at normal capacity while they do this?
Yes, because each individual screen is rated for a million gallons, so we can take one offline while one of them's being fixed, and then as soon as that one goes online, we can take the other one offline.
And we must be in the slow time of year for the-
This is the ideal time to do it. Yes, I did speak with them, and it looks like we can get on their schedule for the end of January, or somewhere into mid-February.
A motion?
I move that we authorize a contract. Chris, did you have the dollar amount for that?
Sure, so the dollar amount that I was quoted by Huber is going to be $25,500, I'm sorry, $25,560.12. And the expense for this would be met through an appropriation from the CCTV line item that we have.
So my motion would be to authorize the contract with Huber Technologies for $25,560.12.
I have a motion, so a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thanks, Chris.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay, approve the 2020 waste hauling permits? I think there was only one that's been brought forward, is that correct?
We ended up with, after we put the packet together, Arlene put it in your packets, we have two. So we have Waste Management and Casella came in at the last minute.
Okay, well, then I move we accept those-
And both have filled out all their applications and paid their fees.
Yeah.
I move that we accept the waste hauling permit for Casella and Waste Management.
Second.
First and second? All in favor? Okay, thirteen, accept a $300 donation for an anonymous donor to the nurse's general account.
So moved.
With much gratitude, second.
All in favor? Thank you very much with that. Other business? Pat?
I would just like to mention to everyone that the Heritage Housing Trust had a very successful evening at the Boathouse, a wonderful dinner, very enthusiastic people that were there, and we raised a total of $13,409.
Oh, wow.
Yes, and it was, everybody had a good time, and you'll see more about it, they've taken pictures of all the participants, and especially the young women that were helping us, and it's going to be remembered as a great evening, so, thank you.
Wonderful.
Sheila?
I just want to thank everybody for their cooperation, help, and presence at first weekend of Prelude, plus all the activities that we're putting on this week are, from what I understand, very well attended, and then unfortunately, we're expecting rain this weekend, but we are, everything is on, it's rain or shine, so Santa's coming.
Even the fireworks?
Fireworks, if they can. That's one of those things that, you know, if it's pouring rain like Saturday night, I don't think they're going to be able to do it, but Friday night, I'm hoping we get it in.
Okay, great.
So, thank you all.
I have nothing, thank you.
Last but not least, I know she must have something on her mind.
I have, I have nothing.
You don't, really?
I could come up with things.
Then I move that we approve the treasurer's warrants before she thinks of something.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Good job, Alan.
You're the only one that's stuck around.